Please, in special called session on Wednesday, August 9th, 2017, in the Boardroom at the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bailey, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, Ms. Marisol Kiana. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Codes, Chapter 551. Sorry if my voice is a little shaky, I had a root canal. A little polka.
I did it.
The invocation will be given by Mr. Jack Bailey and the pledges by Kenny Fernandez. Please stand.
Lord Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings and the safety, Lord. We pray for our nation tonight. We pray for all the things going on and our decisions that need to be made. But we pray for the folks in Austin who are considering legislation that will affect school kids all across the state. We just pray that you guide and direct them. But we thank you for those who stand in our way, our arms' way for us. We just pray that you be with them, guide them, and direct them. And we thank you for the families and of the employees of this district. Lord, we thank you so much, and we pray for their safety. We pray for this school year, Lord, that would glorify you, Austin. We ask in Christ's name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The Board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Codes, Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against public officer or employee. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session very shortly. The Board is reconvening in open session. We're going to move to consideration and possible approval of administrative personnel. Ms. Sullivan?
Madam President, I move that we approve item number four, addendum A through D.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Ms. Sullivan, will you introduce those for us?
It would be my pleasure. As I call your name, would you please stand? Michelle Arminetta. She's been approved for the position of counselor at South Houston High School. She was with Pasadena before, and she left, and now she's coming back. We're delighted to have you back.
Thank you. I'm glad to be back.
Great.
Family.
And you have family with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you introduce them, please?
This is my dad, Frank Armenta. My mom, Yolanda Armenta. My son, Giovanni G. His best friend, Lilian.
Great.
My best friend's mom, Gladys Aboushka. And my best friends, Ahmed Aboushka.
It's nice to have all you with her to celebrate tonight. Robert Vane Davis. Mr. Davis has been approved for the position of Materials Digital Manager with Libraries and Instructional Materials for the 2017-18 school year. Welcome to Pasadena. We think you're going to find that this is a fascinating district. We're delighted to have you. And do you have family with you?
I do not. They're traveling at this time.
Well, you'll have a big family once you get started here. Elisa Ann Wilson. It's hard to see you back there. Ms. Wilson's been approved for the position of Licensed Specialist in School Psychology for the 2017-18 school year. You're new to our district.
Yes, ma'am.
And we know you're going to enjoy it.
Thank you.
Do you have family with you?
No, they couldn't make it tonight. My husband has to take my kids to prior commitments.
We understand. We're delighted to have you.
Thank you.
And you'll assume a large family rather quickly. Lisa Diane Merza. There she is. Welcome to Pasadena.
Thank you.
Ms. Merza's been approved for the position of Assistant Director Technical Services for the 2017-18 school year. And do you have family with you?
I do not. My husband is on a flight coming home from Germany.
Wow. Well, we're delighted to have you in Pasadena, and I'm sure you realize you're joining a very large family.
I see.
We're delighted to have you, and I bet Art's glad to have you, too.
Are you from Middle Tennessee?
Yes, sir.
Where at?
In between Chattanooga and Nashville. Are you from Tennessee?
Oh, no, ma'am. I know better. I'm like Davy Crockett. I'm right.
He's going to Tennessee.
I'm going tomorrow. I go to Tennessee about every two or three months.
Oh, well, I know who to hit your eye with.
Be outside in the morning.
5:30.
Yeah, early.
Congratulations to all of you. This is one of those unusual events where all of our new hires today are new to our district. We have one returning, but all of the others are new to our district, and we hope that you'll find a lot of friendships and a lot of chances for staff development and to help us grow and continue to have the very best school and district in our area. We're delighted to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Next is consideration and possible approval of the 2017-2018 pre-K through high school parent-student handbook.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
This is the handbook that has the issues about discipline and so on and so forth?
It's part of that. There's also a discipline part that Ms. Fuqua's office has presented to you already, and you've approved. So when they're listed online, it's a handbook and then a discipline, what do we call it? Code of Conduct. Thank you for those words.
Is this part of the issue that we talked about early in the day on page 17? We talked about the safe and...
Civil schools.
It was under the title of Discipline Management. That's correct.
You know, my only thoughts on that is, I talked to the superintendent earlier. You know, I don't know what you're going to do. The kids are a whole lot worse than I was, and I thought I was pretty bad. And we all know, to me, I know where it starts at. It starts with the family unit and what kids are learning at home and so on and so forth. And I think it's going to get to the point that the only way that these kids are going to learn is if you hit the parents' pocketbook. And I don't know what it's going to take, but you're going to have to do something to get these, to give these teachers the opportunity to educate the kids that are there to learn and to get the parents that are not being parents, to get them to learn to be parents and make them go to school and try to learn. I don't know what you're going to do. I asked the superintendent today, what can you do to make these people or make these young students behave? And I understand it's a new world, and we've got to do things differently, but it didn't take me very long to understand that I was doing something wrong. And it was handled by a coach or an assistant principal, and there was instant satisfaction for one party and instant dissatisfaction for the other. But I learned that I was doing something wrong. But you can't do that anymore. The world's a softer place, and you can't do that anymore. But I bet you we'd be hard pressed to find anybody in this room that didn't reprimand their child with the end of their, one side of their hand at one side or another, and that's unfortunate. But golly, what are you going to do? Kids are, you know, in my book, the book that I follow, kids are born sinners, and sometimes parents make them real good at it. And so, good luck, superintendent. Good luck, teachers, educators, because your hands, you've got a full slate in front of you. As long as we keep making it easy on the kids, they're going to take advantage of it.
I agree, Fred. I think at some point in time, I think it's incumbent upon us to take discipline back. I mean, I feel like that, I think there's a lot of good parents out there, and I think that they believe in discipline. But I think that, you know, it's a buzzword, you know, that we use now that it's a softer society. I don't think it's any softer. And I think at some point in time, what we've got to do is we've got to say enough is enough, and we've got to say, we're going to take it back, and we're going to do it bit by bit, or we're going to do it all at once, but we're going to do it. Anyway, that's just my opinion.
One more question. Chief, how many citations did we file last year on kids where their parents had to pay for discipline problems?
Put them on the spot.
What do you think to now take an estimate? Because that's the only way, to me, that is the only way these parents are going to pay attention. Get in their pocketbook.
You're going to have more kindergarteners this year. You've got to remember that now.
Yes, sir.
We actually do not issue any citations for discipline issues. We only issue citations for violations of criminal law. Have to throw that in there for any apple seed, people that may be here listening, because they want to always try to say that we issue citations for kids that sleep in class, kids that chew gum and those things, and we don't. We arrest for criminal violations. The numbers were actually down the last two years. I can't give you an exact number tonight, but...
Is it because our principals and teachers have given up calling y'all to get the citations issued, or is it that all of a sudden we've got better kids than we used to have?
I think our data shows the strategies that we're putting in place are more effective. There's some rules changed. I know when I was a principal, I could call PISD police, and they didn't have their hands tied as much as they do now regarding some of the... But when you say discipline, he still can give citations for disruption of class, correct?
Negative. We cannot.
Negative. Okay. So back in my day, you could.
Because of the state legislature that has said that students that attend school cannot be issued citations for disrupting class or disrupting transportation.
So a fight is under what?
If a fight is in the hallway, a fight is under the offensive disorderly conduct.
Disorderly conduct, okay.
But if a fight happens in the classroom, the state legislature says something that is a crime across the street from the campus is no longer a crime when it is on campus. The state legislature, the last two sessions have had a huge push to try to push teachers and parents, teachers, parents, and principals back into being in the discipline and not using police officers for issues that are actually crimes even when they're across the street, but they're saying that that is not a criminal act when it occurs on campus. So they have a whole new category that are called school violations that are actual crimes when it's across the street, but if it's on school property during school hours, suddenly it is no longer a crime.
What is it?
It's a school violation.
And what's a school violation? What's the rules?
It would have to fall under our Code of Conduct.
Falls under the Code of Conduct.
And what is that?
Those are, the Code of Conduct is what you've previously approved.
What do you do to that child that just screwed up and gotten, just clubbed some kid in the hallway? That's not an assault, from what I'm hearing from you.
In the hallway? It would be assault. That would be assault anywhere in the building, if you clubbed them.
Well, is that a...
An assault is still an assault.
Okay, is that a criminal act that...
That is a criminal act, yes.
Okay, so if there's a fight, that would be filed upon?
A fight is a mutual event that both parties wish to be a mutual...
If you ever been in one, you'll find out that normally there's one that...
It may not be mutual for long. It may not be mutual for long, but it is a mutual event.
Tell Kenny Curly that. He's the one that was pounding on me. You know, and I'm sorry I'm harping on this, but number one, I don't know if that ISC is working. I think there's a lot of kids that want to go to ISC to get out of class. I think, I can tell you, I've talked to people recently within the last 24 hours that said it was a joke to them and their friends. I will tell you that we've, I don't know what we're going to do, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to get the support from all these people, which I know they'll give it to us, but we've got to figure out some way or another to get rules back in the classroom, to give teachers the ability to teach.
I agree.
Well, the problem, Fred, is you've said it a lot, he just confirmed it.
Yeah.
You know, our great legislature and our great wisdom said we couldn't do anything about truancy. So therefore, we're responsible for finding these kids, but we're not, they're not a problem with truancy.
Yeah, but we're rated on that truancy.
That's exactly right. So they take all the things away from what we can do, and you ask us to do things that we're not even allowed to do. So it's not a soft society, it's chaos.
I'm going to bring y'all some data next meeting so that you can see our infractions, where they're at across the board at what campuses, and we'll work together to see where the areas are that may be of concern. What I can say is being superintendent and having the privilege of going campus to campus and visiting with administrators and working with them, we do an incredible job in Pasadena ISD, building relationships with students, setting high expectations, because I have nothing but, and enforcing the discipline. Our police are there in an instant. A lot of times, they can't take action, but they'll help secure the situation that might be taking place at a campus and providing safety for all of our employees and our students. I'm not saying our kids are perfect in any way, shape, or form, so I'll say that first and foremost, but the majority of our kids are extremely well behaved. It's a small minority that causes the problems at the campus level. And if you're an administrator in here, you'll probably give me an amen on that, but it's a very small minority that causes problems at our campuses. And those are the kids we've got to unlock the answer to how to help them be successful, because that will carry on in their adult life, and we don't want that for any PISD child.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan?
I caught up today, page 27. The dual-language program. We've alluded to the six elementaries, but we have some intermediate and high school there. Is Scott here? You're going to change that, right?
I believe he's going to add that for the middle school, intermediate, and high school. So we were glad we found that before we went to print.
It's on page 20.
Yes, ma'am. We've already corrected that, so we added in the two middle, in the narrative of the text before the chart, we added in the two middle schools, two intermediates, and one high school that the program extends to.
Great. Thank you very much.
So thank you for catching that.
Other discussion, Kenny?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Dr. Phil, I had discussed this with you earlier about the, on page two, the attendance. And we had discussed on the second paragraph, the attendance, that student attends less than 75%. Did you want to discuss that?
I'm going to let Dr. Hickman come up and explain what the discussions were. We've discussed this not only in, of course, meetings with our administrators, but with our DOI as well, our District of Innovation. But of course, I shared with her that you might be needing clarification on that. So the second paragraph, Dr. Hickman, with the students attending less than 75%, do you want to speak to what will happen as far as review of that child and whether or not they're successfully given credit?
Yes, and Joyce, do you want to bring out that sheet? Joyce also has some information on that. They look at extenuating circumstances. So if it was just a normal child who was skipping school and missing school, but if they were elementary, sometimes you have hospitalizations and other things, and if they can show that they're at grade level and they had extenuating circumstances, there's a checklist of things for the principal and the committee to look at, and they have to have had those kinds of circumstances to be able to be promoted.
Okay, because I just didn't want it to be where they're hitting 5% instead of 75%. I mean, it just, it gives it an open-ended, where does it stop?
Yeah, thank you.
I see what you're saying, with it, anything less than 75%.
It could be 5%. It could be zero.
Right. Do you want to talk to it?
Basically, what, between, actually, it's almost about 20 total absences that are your 90% to your 75%. They do it in reverse order. And anything below the 20 absences, they get down into below the 75%, which at that point, they should, the state really wants you to automatically deny them unless they have extenuating circumstances, and they really have to go through an approval process and work with the parent. You know, they may have been in the hospital a month, or, but then some people are just not there. But the other group of students between, that missed between nine to 20 absences, this is what the principal's plan is about. And basically, what we've done is based upon how many absences the student has, is how many things they have to do with the principal plan. And we've listed a lot of things for them to be able to do, like going to tutorials, and they documenting that, or they take an exam for credit so that we can see how, what they've mastered. If they attend summer school, if they do additional assignments. So they have to, the principal picks how many the student will have to do to complete it for them to be rewarded their credit. And basically, they'll have to do more if they miss like 17 to 20 days. So we've grouped it by 10 to 12, they have to do so many, 13 to 16 absences, they have to do so many, and then 17 to 20, they have to do more. So they'll have to do, but we gave them a good list, the principals went through this, and then we picked all of these things that they could do to help learn and master the material. That's the main thing, is to make sure it's not so much that they're just getting away with something. We want to make sure they've mastered the material.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is, before I move on with the agenda, if you were here tonight to recognize someone that was named in a position, you're free to leave. If you would like to stay, we'd love for you to be here, but we understand you've got other commitments, and thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Let's go ahead and move on with the agenda. Next is consideration and possible approval of the application for general TEA waivers for early, early staff development, participation in the State Teacher Data Portal System, the timeline for accelerated instruction, and staff development through subject training for the 2017-2018 school year. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is discussion of the budget and proposed tax rate.
Board members, as you know, we've been hard at work since January on our 2017-2018 budget. It's been time-consuming because the needs, as we know, are great, and the funding has dwindled, especially that from the state. It's at an all-time low of almost less than 38% of our overall budget, down from 50% a decade ago. So unfortunately, as we also know, our state legislators cannot agree on any bill to improve our very broken state funding system. We talked today about House Bill 21 and how that will go before the Senate on Friday, which could provide some additional funding, but many are not optimistic that it will pass. So in the meantime, districts across the state are struggling or scrambling to keep sound instructional practices and programs in place, stay competitive against recruiting and retaining staff, and continue to operate our day-to-day business side of the House. As we all know, we're facing in Pasadena ISD a $22 million deficit this year due to many things. Of course, we've had to look at the cost of raises, opening of the new Dobie Nine, four new early college high schools, and then, of course, other program and staffing needs. So it's time to educate our entire community as a whole on what we face and what we've got to do to address it now. Unfortunately, many of our community members don't understand the needs, so I want to go over just briefly a presentation to show you what we'll be outlining and sharing as we go further, and it'll be part of what you're taking action on tonight. A tax rate election, of course, is something that you're looking at this evening because the needs are so great. And a tax rate election is a special-called election, called by the Board of Trustees, asking voters to approve a tax rate that's above the current $1.07 M&amp;O tax rate. Of course, we would have to hold it in our district to remain competitive with surrounding districts in recruiting and retaining our wonderful teachers and staff, address student growth, offset cost of unfunded mandates that we're all very aware of and have dealt with, the increased cost of salaries, benefits, utilities, fuel, and medical insurance, to name a few, and to maximize our state funding. On this next slide, you see that Pasadena ISD has two main sources of funding, our local property taxes and our state funds. Many people think as their property values go up, all that money is coming to the district, and yes, that is helpful. However, the state funding decreases as those property values go up. And so you can kind of see from the graphic, when local revenues again increase because of the higher appraisals, our state funding is lessened. On this next slide, I just wanted to show you the comparison of the 17-18, where the salaries are landing around surrounding districts. You can see we're at 51, 779 for a new teacher. And then if you go across, it shows you what HISD, Clear Creek, Pearland, Deer Park, and Galena Park are offering to their first-year teachers. Again, another reason we talked about in the slide previous was student growth. This kind of shows you where we've been, where we sit at today, and hopefully, as we enter the 17-18 year, we'll see a growth as well for our student body. This is an interesting slide because we've done a lot of work, and Kevin, you've done a lot of this negotiating, of course, contracts with our service providers for our utilities. So we've done some great things there. However, we keep adding buildings and square footage to accommodate the growth of students, so of course, our utility costs go up in many of these areas. So you can see we're in 1516, paying over $16,169,671 for a total. Again, unfunded mandates is something that we address in all districts across the state. It's not necessarily an issue of whether they're good or bad, or whether the state should have passed it or not, but there's no funding that comes with those. Special Ed Cameras come to mind as the most recent one that's cost this district a lot of money. But on this next slide, there's been mandates in the area of GT, class size limits, college credit programs, the list goes on and on. So how will the proposed TRE maximize our funding? What will the 13-cent increase do for us? Well, first of all, again, our rate is composed of two parts, our M&amp;O, or Maintenance and Operations Tax Rate, and our Interest and Sinking, or our INS Tax Rate. Just as a reminder to everyone, M&amp;O pays for that day-to-day operation stuff, really important stuff, like payroll, utilities, and maintenance of our schools and our facilities. And INS is used to make payments, of course, on district bonds that fund construction, much like the principal and interest on your home mortgage. So currently, we sit today at $1.35. That's $1.07 in our M&amp;O tax rate and 28 cents in our INS tax rate. The proposed TRE that we're talking about tonight will add 13 cents to the M&amp;O tax rate. And of course, that will help us in, of course, increasing our state funding, okay? So will it cause the district to receive more? The answer is absolutely. It will raise the current tax local income by $16 million, and then the state will match us with an additional $20.7 million, making a total ballpark figure of $36.7 million. So this just kind of gives you a graphic of what we'd be leaving on the table. The local would be 16, the state... The local would be 16, the state match would be 20.7 if we do not go forward. This shows you our current tax rate, and I've brought in surrounding districts, and you can see there where we rank, second to the bottom in our current tax rate being at $1.35. So it ranges anywhere from that up to $1.67 across the area.
Where will we be at if we -- with the TRE?
So if you go back, just for those that might struggle with the vision like I do, that puts you right below Katy ISD on the graph, above Texas -- in between Texas City and Katy.
Right.
This shows you in the last 10 years as a board, you have not called for any increases in the tax rate. You can see here, I'm not sure, total rate in 2004 was $1.77, 2005, $1.80. You can see in 2006, $1.69, and then, of course, you know the changes that took place then, and we've stayed right at $1.35 since 2006.
Is it fair to say there hadn't been a tax increase since 2004 then?
It's fair to say that, correct.
Okay.
Because, well, actually, 2005, is that correct?
Maybe that's what we ought to say then.
That's correct. These are --
And leave those other, just start at the $1.35.
Okay.
Just a thought.
And this is a rough draft, so please give me input. These are districts that have passed the TRE in our area. If you go one more slide, I'm sorry, I'll come back to that. Just so you know, area districts that have passed the TRE, you can see Deer Park, our friends in Galena Park, Goose Creek Consolidated, and others as well. That previous slide just really demonstrates the fiscal accountability, the good stewardship you've been of the district's funds, and of course, the excellent job our business office under John's leadership has for 14 consecutive years, had a superior rating in School Financial Integrity System, and of course, the list goes on and on. You've done things like negotiating insurance prices, selling excess property, refunding existing bond debt to save money, renegotiating purchasing contracts, maximizing our Sharers funding, renegotiating electricity rates, and evaluating contracting out maintenance, food service, and transportation. So I think we're still trying to, with limited open enrollment as an example, turn over every stone and find every dollar possible and maximize our funding, but at some point, we've got to look at the tax rate as our option. Sure, which slide would you like?
Mandate slide.
Okay.
The mandate, mandates.
The unfunded mandates.
Just take me a second.
Sorry, I should have done this before you.
You're willing to pay for this, Marshall? That sounds like a mandate to me.
Now there's a mandate.
Almost there. There you go.
There you go.
My question is, if you went back to 2004, 2005, and looked at the mandates that have been handed at us with no money coming with them, do we have any idea what the dollar figure would be? If you went the last five years, would we know?
That's a good question.
What those costs are to us?
I know we know specialized cameras, because it's really recent, but we could look at some of these others. Absolutely.
Mr. Kendrick, if we can find you an amount, you know, we do have reference materials that list all the unfunded mandates, but we'd have to go back and analyze from the year, and then the amount of cost, we would have to say.
I know it'd be a lot of work, but we need to, I think we need to have that number so that the citizens there understands, here's what it's caused your district. It's had to come out of fund balance, all the money we have available, no tax increase, that the state has chosen not to sit any money with, but mandate we do in regardless, like this current rate situation. Because some school districts can't even afford a band, most definitely, I guess, but that's just a thought.
But I think the year instituted, or the year they're called for, and a dollar figure, and I know it's a lot of work, but we're asking people to open their pocketbooks, so I don't know if it's that much work. It'd be interesting to know. And even comment on, I don't even comment on what the benefit is to us, if it is one.
And what is the benefit to students, right? What is the real benefit to students yet?
You know, if it really has anything to do with what our final outcome is, an educated young person leaving our school district, did it really help us do that, or was it a hindrance? Or could we have spent our money somewhere else and done a little better job?
Looking at those, I see.
I'm sorry, I don't think the legislature, I don't think we need to worry about making them mad, you know? Just call, call spade a spade. Call it just like it is, the way we see it and how it affects us. They're not, we can't vote them out, or we can't vote them in, but you know what, if people see what's going on, then maybe they could find some people that will talk across the aisles and get some things done for the veteran of the state of Texas. You know, you're going to do a special session and talk about bathrooms and cutting trees down, what do you think the people in the middle are thinking about the tree deal? You know, no trees there.
Well, it's been the whole session.
I mean, the whole thing's just been, it's kind of a joke, really. And it's turned into more of a joke, the closer it gets to being over.
Yes.
It looks like to me.
I agree.
Well, we're going to talk about next, our impact on our community member.
You didn't have a slide for that?
I didn't have a slide for that, I'll work on that.
I'm sorry.
So our, of course, our current tax rate's at $1.35, and our proposed rate is at $1.48. So we have a slide comparing the appraised values of homes in our area, of course, and what that would look like for those levels of home. So whether it's $50,000 costing about annual cost of $26 or $2.17 a month, or whether you go all the way over to a $200,000 house, where you have more of an annual cost related to the increase at $201.50, or $16.79 a month. So we've got that broken down into categories of 50, 80, 100, 150, and 200, and of course, we've bolded for our over 65, there would be no impact. Again, for our over 65, there would be no annual cost impact increase or monthly cost increase at all. So just to kind of visualize it for homeowner, our average homeowner's home is $78,000. That would be $1.48 proposed tax rate, it'd be $4.90 a month, or you see there, about the cost of a Starbucks drink, or 15 cents a day. And again, the same for a $100,000 home. You see the tax rate, the $7.04 per month, or about 23 cents a day. So again, we just want to reiterate, if I'm over 65 or disabled, will my taxes go up? No. If your taxes are currently frozen due to an over 65 or disabled person's exemption, then your taxes will not be affected by a tax rate increase. So we know that if the voters would choose to pass the TRE, then we would gain the $36.7 million, we'd continue to operate with a balanced budget, and we can continue to produce innovative educational opportunities for our students, retain our high qualified staff, and then, of course, keep ahead of cost factors affecting our school district. Unfortunately, the other side is not as bright, because if it does not pass, we'd be leaving that 20.7 million of state funding on the table. Of course, Pasadena ISD will operate with a deficit budget, it looks like, without severe cuts, and when we say severe cuts, that's to our program and our staff, would be inevitable, and so that would not just impact our students in the classroom, but extracurricular, any after-school programs, you name it, across the board, and of course, losing wonderful members of our PISD family.
Yeah, some of your biggest cuts would be your athletics, fine arts.
Those would definitely be impacted negatively.
Those will take a major, major hammer.
The full-day pre-k that we're doing great things and getting great results for students, the early college high schools that students are getting a start, a head start on college and being successful as they move on, those programs would be negatively impacted.
You're talking about $22 million, I don't, you know, when you're talking about fine arts and music, fine arts and athletics, I don't think you'd save $22 million.
No, no, not just on the --
No, you won't, no, you're going to be, they're going to take a hit.
Yeah.
They're all going to take a hit, and a lot of the, a lot of the individuals are involved in that, and they're, that's going to, even if your kid's not in one program, your child's going to be hit somewhere. They're going to be hit somewhere.
The sad part is, always save monies with people.
I'm sorry?
Always save the big monies with people.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And with people, go programs, go things for kids that we've been doing, and it's a giant step backwards, is what it is.
Cut out programs, you got to cut people.
So our last slide just tells you the election date, and of course, last date of register to participate in this election would be October 10th, and then early voting would run between October 23rd and November 3rd before November 7th. So I think the next slide says it all. This is who we need to make sure we protect and fight for, and include our community in understanding the needs and what we can do to help make them successful, the children of Pasadena ISD. So I just wanted to share that. I know this is a hearing, public hearing for our budget and our tax rate, so John is available, and Nina, if you have any questions, but at this time, John, I need to ask if anyone wants to come forward and speak. So this is the time, if you're here to speak about the proposals tonight, our budget, tax rate, now is the time to come forward.
Yes.
I thought that the presentation was excellent, and it certainly gives us a start to work with.
I agree.
Good job.
Thank you.
Is that going to be on a, on like a Facebook page or something with wording behind it?
We're going to have a website designated.
That was a great presentation.
And there'll be lots of communication related.
Yeah.
In Espanol, as well as English.
Correct. We'll have it translated as well.
You know, I know you don't want it to be too long, but I think, I think the strategic plan has to be mentioned somewhere in there, and some of the programs that have been added, and not necessarily the cost of those programs, but the benefits of those programs to our district. And maybe, maybe you add that, maybe you think about putting that in something else, but.
The pens are going.
Okay. Well, they sure will.
I think we're not going into this blindly. We've worked on it. It's a part of our plan.
Absolutely.
We've been talking about it for years.
Yes, we have.
This is no surprise.
No. We knew it was just a matter of time, so. Okay, we're going to move to, since there are no, we have heard no comments about the budget, we're going to move to consideration and possible approval of the 2017-18 budget.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Like we haven't discussed it before. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Next is consideration and possible approval of the 2017 tax rate. That's on page 13, and the tax resolution on 14.
So moved.
Motion.
Do we have to state, read it out the way that it is?
Yes.
Okay. You want to read that, Marshall, since you --
Let me find.
Page 13, bottom, under recommendation.
I'm getting there. Okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.48, which is effectively a 9.63 percent increase in the tax rate. I further move that the Board of Trustees adopt by resolution, a tax rate for Maintenance and Operations of $1.20, and a tax rate for interest in sinking of .28 cents, total tax rate of $1.48.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
John, is that, is that right? I mean, okay, that's a good motion. All right. Marshall, you dig?
I think I'll just read.
Any discussion, I'm going to ask one more time. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the order calling the bond election, pages 15 through 23.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion?
Board, I just really want to say quickly, this is more of a continuation from our 2014 bond. There were a lot of projects, because of the amount of funding we could get with no tax rate increase, that we had to cut out of our plan, so as the committee works on this, it'll be members of the 2014 committee, as well as new members, to help bring some insight into where we should go. After several meetings, we'll come back to you with a finalized list, but it's not going to be a new list or something you haven't seen or the committee hasn't seen, because this is unfinished work from our previous bond election.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a seconded by Mr. Kendrick. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the order calling tax ratification election. This is pages 24 through 29.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. No further business to come before this board. This meeting is adjourned.